Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, looks like we got a mayor's award. And a mayor. Okay, and I don't know if Mr. Coach Jim Mathis wants to come up here. I have a mayor's award for community service to Coach Jim Mathis. For his continued service to the city of Leavenworth for over 55 years. Jim has served on the city of Leavenworth Parks and Community Activities Advisory Board for 22 years, 19 of which he served as the board's chairman. Jim helped develop students and players alike when he was a teacher and a tennis coach at Leavenworth High School. Jim also volunteered each year for 50 years to run the city's two annual tennis tournaments on Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends. His commitment and passion showcase the best of Leavenworth. Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go.
We appreciate that.
Sure, come on up and say a few words. You did. Wow. Look at you, and you get a green, and then you get a pen. So yeah, well, lucky you. So yep, you can just, do you want to say a few words?
Well, I'll try to make it short. Hey, I came here in 1965, and I didn't know how long I was going to stay here. My mother was born here, actually, but I didn't know, I'd never been here, and she left as a young girl. But I started teaching, and I loved those kids at the high school. I went to work, and it was fun to go to work. And I got into the coaching, and I want to thank all the, some of you former students who are out there, I want to thank you because without you, I wouldn't have had a job.
You don't have time.
Yeah, you don't have time. I talk business, man, but it's warming. I was originally going to grow up and go down to Florida and play tennis on the clay courts. My old bad knees kind of cut that out, and my wife didn't want to go either. But I'm glad to stick around here and see the success of the students that I used to have. And it's very rewarding to tend the, there's a couple here tonight, too, that I had, but well, thank you, and it's about 24 years, it's, I've enjoyed it, really. And I'll go back just briefly. I'd been playing tennis down in Naples. I came back on a Sunday night, and my wife told me you're supposed to be in a meeting at 5:00 o'clock down at the riverfront. And I guess the school board, I said, put my name in, so I didn't even know what I was getting myself into. But it's been enjoyable, the people to work with. We've, we've made a lot of good changes here in the city, but, well, thank you for everybody who came out. Just want to mention, here's a book I wrote on tennis sometime, and
When did you write?
Four, three years ago.
A Legacy of Tennis. Fifty Years of Tennis History, 1965 to 2015.
Uh huh. If you want to, I'll give this to the city commissioners, they'd like to see that.
Sure.
Okay.
My name's in there.
Did you take your cell phone? Was that from the whole porch?
Yeah. The group's lead was cute. He'd be surprised. All his students.
Was he? Yeah.
I'll wait till they leave here.
That was good.
Consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from November 22nd, 2022, regular meeting. Any questions or concerns from my fellow commissioners?
Oh, no.
Okay, I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the amendments from November 22nd, 2022, regular meeting.
Second.
Begin voting, Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, then it looks like the next six items are roll call. So first up is second consideration ordinance number 8201, amending Chapter 46, Article 3, Division 2 and Division 4, Grease Trap Interceptor Regulations.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, there have been no changes since the first reading, and we've also not received any feedback from the public on this item, so it's before you tonight for adoption.
Okay, questions or concerns? Anybody? Okay, just a roll call, Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Second consideration ordinance number 8202, amending Chapter 44, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 2, Street Use Designations, Section 44-32, School Zones.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, again, there have been no changes. The chief is here. If you have any questions, this is related to reestablishing a school zone in the city of Leavenworth, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, roll call, Commissioner Hingla.
Aye.
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 Second consideration ordinance number 8203, rezoning 2700 State Street from multifamily residential district to residential mixed-use district.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since the November 22nd meeting, and the item is before you tonight for final consideration.
Any questions, any concerns? Okay, roll call, Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Joe, I'll be here for David Waters. He wanted me to remind you that we've written record that the consideration of this is based upon the golden factors and has been appropriately passed through that process.
Okay, great. No, thank you. Very important. Okay. Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Second consideration ordinance number 8204, rezoning 212, 220, and 224 Maple Street from high-density, single-family residential district to light industrial district.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, again, no changes. This is related to the Geiger parking lot project there over by the park, and again, consideration done through the golden factors, and the item is before you tonight.
Any questions?
No.
Anybody? Okay, roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay. Second consideration ordinance number 8205, rezoning 28 Limit Street and 2 Vilas Street from medium-density, single-family residential district to planned unit development.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, the same holds true for this item. There have been no changes, the same factors at play under consideration, and the item is before you tonight for final adoption.
Any questions? Anybody?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay. Second consideration ordinance number 8206, authorizing the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds, Series 2022, MAPS Project.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this will close out the MAPS project, the city's incentive portion of this. As a quick reminder, as part of the luring that company, bringing that company to the city of Leavenworth and their 20-plus jobs, the city is abating 60% of the property taxes for six years. That number was determined by an economic development return model that we use from Wichita State University, and it's before you tonight for final adoption.
Any questions?
No.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, start on with those. Public comment, new business, public comment, i.e. items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes, and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. Anybody? Anybody? Okay. I know sometimes people forget to sign up. Okay, next up, general items. It's nomination for terms December 13th, 2022, to December 12th, 2023. First up, and I'll make the motion, is Mayor, Mayor, December 13th, 2022, to December 12th, to 2023. And I guess, do I just say, I, as Mayor Kamala Leonhard, make a motion for mayor for this next term, for Ed Hingla. I need a, uh huh, Ed Hingla, not going to second that. I need a second. Okay. Begin voting with Griff Martin.
Aye.
No. Aye.
No.
Aye.
Okay. Then Mayor Hingla gets it. Okay, switch. Doesn't have to be four to one? No? Okay. Oh, you want to take that? Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to take any of that?
No.
Okay.
I'll have it here. Oh, well, this one. The second nomination needs to be for the mayor pro tem, and I'll make that motion. I'll nominate Griff Martin to be the mayor pro tem for December 13th, 2022, to December 12th, 2023. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Excuse me, start voting with Kamala.
Commissioner, aye.
Hey, nah, honestly, I don't know what political game is being played right here, but this is...
This is not a political game.
Yeah, yeah.
This is not a political game.
This is disrespectful, because the citizens elected me. I received the most votes. Traditionally, the mayor pro tem, the one that received the most votes, gets appointed to serve as the mayor of the city. If the, if the citizens did not want me to serve in this seat, they would not have elected me for the second term. So I don't know what it is that you have against me and the reason that you're making this decision, but it is uncalled for. I served this community well, and the thing is, regardless of my schedule, how you may feel about anything, I served to make a difference. That's why the position comes to me. And I do this wholeheartedly, and so I don't know what it is and the reason that you're taking this route. It is uncalled for, it's unacceptable, and the citizens don't even deserve or appreciate this. That's totally ridiculous. It makes no sense.
Well, I can make a few comments.
Makes no sense.
Probably shouldn't.
That's ridiculous.
You voted no?
That's jealousy, pure jealousy, that's what that is.
It is not pure jealousy.
Pure jealousy.
It is not pure jealousy.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's finish.
Yeah, it is not.
Yours is nay.
No.
Aye.
No. Aye.
Politics at its finest, that's what this is.
We've been dealing with it all night, bro, you know what to do.
There's no explanation?
I do have an explanation, but I don't know, I can say it at the end.
We'd like to hear now.
We'd like to hear.
Okay, well, let's, let's go back here. Before, let's see, when I was mayor pro tem, and Commissioner Bowder was mayor, and Jermaine served on the commission, and there was a lot of meetings you missed and all that, and I came, listen, listen to me, it's my turn to speak. No, I'm saying, let me talk. Let me talk. I listened to you, but respectfully, I came to you before I became mayor, and you were going to be mayor pro tem, and I said, hey, Jermaine, you know, you weren't at a lot of the meetings last year, you weren't accountable. I had people come to me and say that. So, and you said, hey, I'm, I'm going to be better and show up as mayor pro tem. So I was like, okay, no problem. So as I went through the whole year, and I know you have, and I'll tell you, you get praises on your ministry schedule, and I know that, you know, you're working on a book, and my thing is, every time I turned around, I had Commissioner Hingla was there, and I felt like he supported me. And so I had to think hard, you know, thoughtful, that I needed someone, because, you know, I worked my butt off this year, and I'm born and raised in Leavenworth, and, but I wanted to, for my motion, for Commissioner Hingla, since he was there. No political agenda, I'm unaffiliated, and that was how I felt.
But how dare you judge me because I missed a few meetings, and I still showed up, even if I had to call in, and you knew what I had to do to support my family. How would you hold that against a person for trying to...
It's not that...
They're doing all the work, he's back for the people of Leavenworth.
Hey, no, no, babe, hey, Jess, Jess, sit down, stop. No, 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 no.
Isn't it usual that the mayor pro tem always becomes the mayor? Is there anything that's like that, or no? I'm asking him. I'm just asking you.
Jess, wife, sit down, please, just sit down.
I have a poll question.
Don't put them on the spotlight, yeah, no, we good, we good.
Okay, well, it is what it is.
Yeah, but...
There have been times in history where that has not happened.
Only, only if the mayor was unable to serve.
Yeah.
Or they did something illegal.
You took it as...
That was the only time that I've ever seen a mayor not elected for that.
Yeah.
That did not get the highest vote.
Thank you.
And he got way higher.
Now you can speak first up. Now you can move on with your meeting if you wish.
I now ask for nominations for the financial claims reviewer.
Mr., sorry, Paul, is it, do I make a nomination on something like this?
Yeah, the, we open the nominations up to the floor, or up to the commission.
I have.
Nominate Commissioner Bowder?
No, I will not do it.
If there's a nomination, it does have to, if it fails for a second, you have to, nomination on the floor.
Is there a second? There is no second. I open the nomination again.
Fails for a second.
Commissioner Leonhard?
For what? For the financial claims?
For the financial claims reviewer.
Okay, I've done it once. Yeah, that's fine.
I'm okay.
There needs to be a second.
Oh, a second, okay. Yeah, I was going to say, I think we've all done it.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Wilson was before me in that capacity, so...
So it's been seconded as now on the floor of the vote.
I need, I need to take a vote, starting with Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
Aye.
What do we vote for, ma'am?
Claims reviewer.
Claims reviewer. Aye.
Okay. In case, Commissioner Leonhard will be, will serve as the financial claims reviewer. Next item up is second consideration ordinance 8205, rezoning 28 Limit Street, I'm sorry, we've already done that one.
Oh, yeah, number 10. Number 10.
Number 10.
Yeah. Consideration of the, where is it?
Okay, page 42.
Yep. Consideration of cereal malt beverage licenses for 2023.
City Clerk Sarah Bodenstine will handle this item.
Mayor and commissioners, before you tonight is the 2023 Cereal Malt Beverage License Approval. It is required, the city commission approves these each year by state statute. The following 19 establishments have made application for the renewal of their cereal malt beverage for 2023. The police department has performed the records check and approved the applications for renewal of the following establishments. 711 at 609 Metropolitan Avenue, 3 Casey's General Stores at 2004 Spruce Street, 1950 Eisenhower Road, 2100 South Fourth Street, Dylan's at 720 Eisenhower Road, Hometown at 111 North Broadway, Minute Mart at 3122 South Fourth, Murphy USA at 1050 Eisenhower, Price Chopper 2107 South Fourth, Sam Food Mart at 1031 Metropolitan, Stargaz 788 Spruce Street, Walgreens 2900 South Fourth, Walmart at 5000 10th Avenue, Abe's Place 5101 10th Avenue, Ava's Island Cafe 732 Shawnee Street, Eddie's Grocery 1101 Spruce Street, The Little Bar 1431 10th Avenue, New Way Drive-In 510 Shawnee, Town Pub Restaurant at 1001 Ottawa Street.
Sarah, I think we, on the second Casey's, I think you said 1950 Eisenhower.
950 Eisenhower, sorry.
Just for the record.
Nope. Thank you, Paul. So staff is recommending approval of the issuance of these licenses as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question. Aren't there others that do serve malt beverages on, in their establishment? Are they just renewed at a different time?
No, so these are an annual license that always expire on the 31st, 31st of December. We did have two applications, applicants advised they were not renewing. CVS has decided to pull cereal malt beverage sales from anything with the Health Hub nationwide, so that's why they're not renewing, and then we've had a restaurant since closed that had a cereal malt beverage license, that they will not also be renewing.
So places like the Tenpenny, the Suburban, the Depot?
Those places have liquor licenses, so those brands are just handled solely by the state. This is cereal malt beverage, which is up to 6% alcohol, so you're a 3-2 beer.
Okay, thank you. I call for a vote. Start with...
I need a motion. Motion.
Oh, I need a motion.
Let's see.
Thank you.
I motion approval the issuance of the 2023 Cereal Malt Beverage Licenses as Presented.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll start voting with Commissioner...
Aye.
Aye.
Martin. Aye.
Aye.
Next item, cancellation, December 27th, 2022, regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, the city commission has traditionally, since I've been here, canceled the, the final meeting in December usually falls between Christmas and New Year, so we usually cancel that final meeting, and as a reminder, regular meetings have to be canceled by the governing body.
Okay, is this going to be, I see here it'll be posted on the doors of city hall on social media. Is this also going to be placed in our official newspaper?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the cancellation of the December 27th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Next item is update for unsafe structures, 717 Spruce Street.
This will be handled by Halbert at the chief building inspector.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. 717 Spruce, I brought to you several times before tonight. Last time in October, we were still waiting for a furnace and a window to be repaired. Both, both items have been completed, so I asked Sarah to put this on the agenda so I could ask the commission to go ahead and release the funds and take this off and return the funds back to the property owner at this time.
Okay.
May I await a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I approve the release of the funds back to the property as stated, property owner.
I second.
Call for votes. Start with Commissioner Griffin.
Aye.
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 Next item is proposed amendments to the 2022 budget.
This item will be handled by our finance director, Roberta Byer.
New Year and Commissioners, I'm proposing a republication of the 2022 budget, which will increase the expenditure authority to accommodate unanticipated expenditures for the Stormwater Fund and the Auto Tiff Fund. According to KSA 79-2929A, municipalities are authorized to amend the budget, spend money not in the original budget, as long as the additional expenditures do not require additional tax levies. In September 2021, the commissioner approved and adopted the 2022 budget establishing the maximum expenditures for various funds and the amount of ad valorem taxes levying to provide funding for those expenditures. According to Kansas statutes, funds cannot exceed the expenditure authority without amending the budget. Budget amendments must be made from existing revenues and cannot require additional tax levies. Before proposing an amendment to the budget, there must be a notice of public hearing published in the local newspaper 10 days prior to the hearing. A notice of public hearing for amending the budget was published in the Leavenworth Times on Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, and due to the circumstances that were not anticipated when the 2022 budget was originally published, the above-mentioned funds will exceed their spending authority. Additional revenues are available to support the increased expenditures. Staff recommends that the 2022 budget for the above-mentioned funds be amended as proposed. The proposed amendments require no additional taxes. Just for a little extra information on the Stormwater Fund, we are requesting to exceed the spending authority by $200,000. This additional spending authority is requested primarily because of the Second and Chestnut Project. The cost of that project is being incurred over two years, 2022 and 2023, and I'm requesting this budget amendment to make sure there's sufficient spending authority for the invoices we receive in 2022. This increase in spending authority does not represent an increase in the cost of the project. There will not be additional revenues required to cover the cost of the project, and there are sufficient funds in the Stormwater Capital Project Fund to cover the increase in spending authority. On the Auto Tiff, I'm requesting an increase in $100,000, and this is because of increased revenues. The Auto Tiff collects CIB sales tax, incremental sales tax, and incremental property taxes. As the city collects these taxes, they are submitted to the appropriate developers. The budget amendment is requested because tax collections and therefore expenditures may exceed the original budgeted amount, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Any questions?
I don't think so.
No.
In that case...
A motion to open a public hearing.
Yeah, open, yeah, we need the motion.
You need a motion to open a public hearing?
I move we open a public hearing.
Second.
Start voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Okay. So, public hearing is open, and is there anybody who wishes to come and speak for or against this amendment to the 2022 budget?
No.
Any staff of public comments?
No.
No, no additional comments.
No additional, yeah.
In that case, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. I second.
Start voting with Mr. Martin.
Aye.
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 Aye. Oh, aye.
Okay, I'll consider a motion to amend, to approve this amendment to the 2022 budget.
I motion to consider amendments to the 2022 budget.
Second.
Start voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
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 Next item up, resolution to collect uncollectible tenant accounts.
This will be Julie Hurley to handle this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Again, these are, it's a resolution to collect uncollectible tenant accounts for the planters to facility. This is an annual process that we have to go through that's required by HUD. These accounts are folks that have either passed away or otherwise moved out into, if my sense of nursing home, or something else where they've been unable to be reached. The charges are generally for repairs. Folks that are in electric wheelchairs tend to cause a fair amount of damage to walls and carpet, that type of thing that has to be taken care of after they move out. So that's what the charges would cover, and again, this is required by HUD, that we do this every year.
charges would cover. And again, this is required by HUD that we do this every year. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
So this will just forgive the amounts in these tenant accounts?
Yes, this wipes off the books as is required by HUD that we do.
Any questions?
No, no.
Questions?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution, number B 2325.
Okay, I motion to, make a motion, Resolution B 2325, planters to tenant write-off accounts.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Bellar. Aye?
Aye.
So that's passed. Next, policy report, considering commercial insurance package for 2023.
We have Sarah Bodensteiner here, but we also have the city's insurance agent, Mike Riley, who will walk us through the insurance renewal process and changes or highlights to the proposed 2023 commercial insurance package.
So, Mayor and Commissioners, each year, the city, in conjunction with Mike Riley of the Riley Company, reviews the renewal and possible bids for insurance coverage for the city. This year, our current provider, Travelers, provided a renewal quote for the 2023 coverage. Per the premium summary that was provided in the policy report, Travelers quoted a price of $454,141, which is roughly a 3.5% increase. We did budget a 5% increase for the 2023 budget, so that it is within that range. Travelers did institute a change to their deductible for wind and hail, which led the Riley Company to go to open market to review a possible buy-down option. I'll have Mr. Riley review that with you, along with any other questions you may have in terms of our insurance coverage.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, thank you for your time tonight. As Sarah mentioned, this is the renewal of the property and casualty insurance program. We have been with Travelers, for those of you who have been on the commission for a number of years, this is our second year with Travelers Insurance. We have a long history with Travelers dating back 25 years. We've been with Travelers of those about 15 years. We switched for a period of time when they fell out of favor and were with a different insurance carrier. We have now been back with Travelers for two years. During that timeframe, we've had actually a pretty good history of claims situations with them. Over the two-year period, they've paid about 25 different claims totaling almost $275,000. The bulk of the claims over those two years have been in the auto coverage, a little bit of property, and then some liability claims. So, all in all, over a two-year period of time, $275,000 of claims paid versus annual premiums in the 400 to $440,000 range. Your loss experience with Travelers has been very good, and I think it's indicative of the renewal that we have received. Right now, in the insurance business, we are in a, what's called a very hard market, which means rates are rising, terms are changing, and it's really due to a host of different issues, primarily a lot of catastrophic claims that have hit the insurance marketplace. So, from a trend standpoint, we are seeing renewals in the 15% to 18% renewal range. That is not uncommon for most commercial entities, including public entity business, at this stage of the game. Travelers came in, as Sarah mentioned, a 3.5% increase, which is incredibly strong. So from a premium standpoint, I will tell you, we have not seen, in the past four months, a renewal come in as strong as this. And I think it's indicative of what Travelers feels and hopes to be a long-term relationship with the city of Leavenworth. Having said that, as Sarah mentioned, you do have a very comprehensive plan, and I know you just got handed the full proposal, so I'm not going to ask you to review that in depth right now. I know, for those of you who have been on the commission a number of years, you've seen that. It is very comprehensive. We go over it with staff. Sarah and her team do a great job of keeping us informed of changes throughout the year. We track those changes too, obviously, from commission meetings and the Leavenworth Times. But one of the things that is happening in the insurance marketplace today is more, I guess I would call self-insurance on some larger deductible items. And we are certainly seeing that when it comes to our commercial businesses. So, from a public entity standpoint, while the premium is remarkably low from a renewal standpoint, they have changed the terms of the property deductible, when it comes to wind and hail only. So, when you think about all the perils that are insured, be it, you know, fire, vandalism, explosion, theft, all kinds of different things can happen, we're talking here only about the wind and hail deductible. So, I'm going to walk you through this single sheet page, if I could just focus on that. For all other perils, we have a $10,000 deductible, okay? So, but when it comes to wind and hail, the change that Travelers has made wholesale across all of their public entity business, and it doesn't matter if it's a city of 5,000 population or a city of 500,000 population, they are instituting a minimum of 1% deductible for wind and hail with a minimum of $100,000. So, let me walk you through that. We have roughly $72 million of building values insured under this policy. That is all the buildings spread throughout the city for a replacement cost basis. 1% of that value is $727,000. This would be your deductible in the event that all of the buildings, at one time, in one occurrence, were damaged by wind or hail, okay? If, however, a portion of the city's buildings were damaged by wind or hail, which is more than likely going to be the case, as opposed to every single building, the total value of those buildings' damage would be added up by Travelers and per the coverage that we have on the policy, and 1% would be applied with a minimum of $100,000 deductible. So at the very least, when it comes to wind and hail, we've got $100,000 deductible. As Sarah mentioned, we did go out to the marketplace to look at a buy-down option, and we can buy this deductible down to a flat $100,000, not taking into account any percentage, for about $79,000 a year. I'm going to get, I'll walk you through that in a minute. On that single sheet of paper, I have given you five different claim scenarios, because I know this is foreign language to a lot of you. So, I thought the claim scenarios would be an easier way to maybe explain this. So, under number one, if there is a wind or hail storm that damages one single building, and that building is valued on our policy, anything less than $10 million, anything less, it can be 100,000, 500,000, or 9 million, your deductible will be $100,000 for wind and hail. Scenario two, if a wind or hail storm damages several buildings, but the total values are still under $10 million, the deductible will still only be the $100,000, okay? Numbers three and four are where it gets more expensive. Number three, if a wind or hail storm damages one building that is over $10 million in value, and there are three potential buildings that the city of Leavenworth has insured for over $10 million, the deductible would be 1% of the value of that building damaged. So I've listed those. We have City Hall covered for roughly $11 million. The deductible for City Hall would be $110,000, 1%. The community center, roughly $12.2 million, the deductible would be $122,000. And the sewage treatment plant, this one's a little, I guess the coverage here is 26 million and some change. It's a little bit confusing, because a lot of that value is in piping underneath the ground. But nevertheless, we do have $26 million of value there. So the deductible there would be $262,000. That's if one building was damaged. Number four is if several buildings are damaged, all totaling values over $10 million. The deductible will be 1% of the total of all of those buildings damaged. And I gave you a scenario of what possibly could happen, right? And I listed five or six different locations in those buildings and their coverage, and what the deductible would be per location. Under that scenario, we have total coverage of $57 million. The deductible would be $575,000. And then the final example I gave is what I alluded to earlier, is if every single building that the city owned was damaged by wind, storm, or hail, then we have the $72 million of coverage. Your deductible would be $727,000. So, the question then becomes is, does the buy-down make sense? And what I will share with you is, you are probably the 40th client that I've had this conversation with in the last two years. At the $80,000 mark per year in premium, to get to a flat $100,000, my recommendation is that the buy-down does not make sense right now. What we are seeing most of our clients do is set up reserve accounts for this wind and hail deductible that is now coming, not just with municipality business, but across the lines in every single insurance policy for commercial enterprises. And I will tell you, you're probably seeing it, if you haven't seen it yet, even in your personal insurance, when it comes to your homeowner's policy. You're seeing wind and hail deductibles of 1% to 5%. So this is nothing new, but when it comes to the numbers and the math associated with the city of Leavenworth and a larger entity, obviously, the deductible amount, because we are insuring such large values, can get rather high. When I look at $80,000 a year in premium, I can look out and say for, you know, in six years, we almost have half of the liability funded.
Right.
And if we're lucky enough to get to 10 years and 12 years, then we've effectively self-funded that loss without paying that premium every single year, when we don't typically have those wind and/or hail claims every single year.
Sure.
And what I would tell you is, you know, this is happening across the board with Travelers, but certainly the wind and hail piece of this is directed towards two areas of the country. Our area, the Midwest, where we have a lot of wind, storm, tornado, and hail, it's also being directed to the coast, where they obviously are experiencing all the hurricanes that have happened. So, that's my recommendation. I know, quite frankly, I apologize for, I really apologize to Sarah and staff, because this was a, this was a late notice from Travelers, and we really had to go to the marketplace to kind of nail this down, and this premium came in this morning. And so I did not have time to really review that with Sarah and staff, and certainly Paul and his staff, so I'm hitting them cold with this as well. So my apologies for that. At the same time, we have been pushing very hard, and it's certainly not an excuse, but with Hurricane E., and I can tell you, every insurance company we deal with, their direction and their management and their claims and underwriting services are all directed to Florida right now and not to, unfortunately, to Kansas. So, we were a little behind the eight ball. But having said that, that's my recommendation. It is a change that I wanted to notify you about, because it could be significant. But I think that the right course of action for the city of Leavenworth would be to set aside a reserve account, however that happens from a public entity standpoint, to help fund some of those potential wind hail claims going forward. Other than that, again, I'm very pleased with the renewal from Travelers. They are a Class A provider for public entities. You are a Class A account, given your history with them over the past two years, and they recognize that.
Mr. Crimber, any notes that our Finance Director, I want to add to?
I just had one question. When you were discussing the deductibles based off of the value of the building, the 1%,
Yes, ma'am.
Is it 1% of the value of the building or 1% of the damage caused to the building?
Great question. It's unfortunately 1% of the value of the building.
Okay, so we might have $200,000 worth of damage to this building, but because the building's covered for $11 million, it would be $110,000 deductible.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
When it comes to the wind and hail piece, especially for smaller claims or smaller buildings, it almost becomes a self-insurance situation.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Any other questions?
No.
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 Thank you, Mr. Riley. Appreciate all the information and the work.
Thank you. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay. I'll now entertain motions to approve the 2023 commercial insurance package with or without the Travelers, or if, from Travelers, with or without the buy-down option.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve that update to our policy without the buy-down option.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
Okay, explain that to me again, buy-out option again. I heard it, you know, but I didn't quite understand.
And we, we actually almost pay the premium. We pay about 20, almost 25% less every year. That basically gets applied to our premium, whether or not we use it, and it just gets to where we can...
Okay.
Yeah, we're subject to higher deductibles without the, without the buy-down, but we're also able to bank those dollars and create a reserve to pay future deductibles should be...
I'll second that then. Thank you.
Okay.
That was already, was already seconded. I just wanted to make sure there were no other discussions. In that case, let's start voting with Commissioner Leonhardt.
Yeah, aye.
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 Okay. We'll consider an agreement between Kansas State Historic Preservation Officer and the City of Leavenworth.
Once again, Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, this is an agreement between the Kansas State Historic Preservation Officer and the City of Leavenworth. This allows the city to perform statutory reviews of historic properties, basically designates the city as a certified local government or CLG. We've been under this agreement with the state since 2000. This is an agreement that's renewable every five years. We do have the Leavenworth Preservation Commission, which is the body that performs those reviews. And so what that allows us to do is keep review of historic properties local, with staff and board members that are appointed by the mayor, instead of property owners having to go to the state for reviews of their historic properties. So that turns out to be a pretty big benefit for owners of historic properties here in the city. So again, this is just a renewal. It's a five-year extension, and so you'll see that back again in another five years. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
Oh, how many, how many folks are on the city's historic preservation board?
We have five right now. We do have two open positions.
I thought we had a couple openings.
So, yes.
Yep.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you have anybody who'd like to point, we certainly, we'll take the suggestions.
Not off the top of my head. Okay. Any questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to approve agreement between the Kansas State Historic Preservation Officer and the City of Leavenworth for performance of project reviews.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We'll start voting with Mayor, with Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. We'll now consider policy report on polycarb tippers for the refuse trucks.
This will be Brian Faust, the Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This item is to consider the purchase of six polycarb tippers along with truck modification and installation of other tippers on the city's six rear-load refuge trucks. The purchase and installation of the polycarb tippers are needed as the city transitions from manual refuge collection to a hybrid system, which utilizes both polycars as well as manual. During the October 4th work session, the City Commission provided consensus to staff to move forward with a hybrid approach to solid waste collection. Staff developed specs and bid polycarb tippers, along with the needed modifications to the trucks, along with the installation of the equipment. The bids were advertised, plus the city did notify five equipment dealers who would likely be able to provide the tippers. Bids were opened on November 30th of this year. The city did receive one bid from Elliott Equipment Company. A second company planned a bid that notified staff that they had a personal issue. A second company planned a bid that notified staff that they had a personal issue the day of bid and were unable to submit the bid. Elliott Equipment Company's bid was $61,158, and staff's estimate for this was $12,000 per truck, so $72,000. Funding for the tippers will be from the American Rescue Plan Act. The staff does recommend the city commission approve the purchase, truck modifications, and installation of polycart tippers from Elliott Equipment in the amount of $61,158. Be happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question. Just so on the, on the tippers, I mean, what does that, what does that look like on the truck? Is it?
There should be a picture in your package.
Oh, was it?
But it goes to the, it's amounted to the rear of the truck on one side.
Okay.
And so, what happens, uh, the worker would wheel the polycart out and attach it to the tipper, and it would actually pick up the polycard and dump it. But we're only doing one per truck, because we still only have it option to do manual collection, and so it'll leave on one side of the truck.
Okay, is that, okay, yeah, I see the picture now. So, is that, I guess, is that normal for a refuge truck? Don't they, do they ever have the ones in the front, or is that a different?
They actually have ones in the front. Those are usually for more of the bigger trucks.
Okay.
But they also have side load, and in the 2022 budget, we did purchase a refuge truck, and we actually budgeted for a side load, uh, where the truck could actually just pull up and load from the side. Um, at that time, there was not a decision made if we wanted to go with polycarts.
I got you.
And there's also an issue with people parking on the streets. Uh, it's more challenging with all the parked cars to try to weave those in, so this is, we felt this was the way to go.
To go the back, okay. No, thank you.
Mr. Faust, is there any manufacturer's warranty on these? Just out of curiosity, it comes with them.
Um, I believe we actually asked for a three-year warranty on those.
Cool. Okay. Cool.
Mr. Faust, I know, I've written through, they expect to have these things finished by the, by the end of May.
Correct.
When are we having the, when do we expect the delivery of the polycarts?
We're working with two different vendors, both on Sourcewell, uh, on that. They have a manufacturing time of between two and three months, and so we expect to hopefully bring something back to the commission in late January here, early February on that.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so, uh, just looking at ballpark, we should have them by 31st of May.
I would, I would hope so, yes. As far as, as far as the trucks, um, we need to use the trucks, so we'll be taking one truck at a time.
Sure.
So, once one truck is retrofitted, then we'll bring it back and then do the second truck, and so.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
No.
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of the, uh, polycart tippers from Elliott Equipment Company in the amount of $61,158, not to exceed.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. That one's good. And consideration of water pollution control division's purchase of ultraviolet lamps from Epic Water.
Mr. Faust, will continue with this item?
Yes, actually, this item is to consider the purchase of 480 low-pressure, high-volume ultraviolet lamps and associated parts to replace all the lamps in channel three of our UV system. The system actually has three channels. UV disinfection system at our wastewater treatment plant was placed into service in 2012. The lamps are typically warranted for 12,000 hours to 36 months from the date of purchase. The current lamps were replaced in 2017 and have accumulated 11,647 hours as of last week when we wrote the policy report. Uh, this is the second of three needed UV purchases. The first was in January of 2022 for channel one. Uh, in late 2023, we will be requesting one additional purchase to finish out the replacement of the lights in our three-channel system. Uh, in an effort to save on the cost of replacing the lamps, the city has maintained steady flow through the UV system by installing variable frequency drives on several of our upstream pumps. This has resulted in less on and off cycles for the lamps, meaning fewer chances of the lamps in ballast burning out. Uh, staff has also worked with the Raylynson Company to reprogram our lighting controller. This adjusted the number and intensity of the lamps that are on at any one time, further reducing the hours on lamps and extending their operational life. These efforts have bought additional years of life to each channel. Uh, the staff at WPC will be the ones that will remove and replace the lamps, and this eliminates the third-party installation cost. Uh, in the past, the city has used the original supplier of the UV lights. Uh, staff did investigate using a third-party that can provide the lamps meeting our specifications. As part of this process, we require third-party vendors to supply sample lights to give us an opportunity to see how they were packaged and how well they operated. Uh, we've contacted three suppliers, the UV doctor. Twice, they shipped sample lamps to us, and twice, they were broken. We were able to salvage one light, which we used and installed on September 29th, and by November 1st, it had failed. Uh, their bid was $109,440. Epic Water, we requested sample lamps. The lamps were packaged exceptionally well. We installed these lamps on October 30th, and as of this date, they are still working. Uh, their quote was $88,440. And then Trojan UV is the company that made the system. That's the company we've always purchased the lights from, and they have always worked. Uh, their quote was $141,288. Uh, lamp warranties from the first two vendors are, uh, to 12,000 hours, and no, not prorated. So, if 11,000 hours fails, they send us a new lamp. Uh, the third vendor is prorated by hours. Uh, budget impact, uh, the 2022 budget did include $100,000 for the replacement of these lamps and funding a sewer front operating budget. There is also funding in 2023 for replacement of the next and last channel of lamps. Uh, staff does recommend the city commission approve the purchase of 480 UV lamps with the associated parts and supplies from Epic Water for a not-to-exceed cost of $88,440. If approved, the city staff will install the lamps and monitor their performance over a six-month period. Based on this performance, staff will determine if they are more cost-effective and meet our permitted requirements and create it to the original manufacturer. Uh, the city commission can accept the bid that's recommended by city staff, or select a different supplier, or reject the bid. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Faust, even though we've got three bids here, as far as the, the brand of the bulbs, I would, I'm guessing they're all three different brands too, is that right?
Correct. I mean, I think that they do meet the specifications.
They do meet the specs, okay.
And all of them have been approved for usage in UV.
Okay. And part of the specs are, um, construction and, and different elements like that, not just fitting, but also, um...
Right, they have to put a certain intensity, those types of things that, that match what our system was designed for. And so, basically, the specs that we had originally is what we put out. I'm talking to Epic and the UV doctor.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. I didn't know if there's anything around, you know, any outside pressures or anything like that on the, the lamp itself, you know? If there's any spec-in requirements there that...
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the purchase of 480 UV lamps with the associated parts and supplies from Epic Water for not-to-exceed cost of $88,440. A second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Faust.
Thank you.
Uh, consider accepting low bid for Planters 2 for prepping and painting walls, ceilings, and doors on floors 2 through 10.
The next two items will be handled by Julie Hurley.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, this is to award the bid for prepping and painting of walls, ceilings, and doors on floors 2 through 10 of the Planters 2 building. Uh, this was last done about 12 and a half years ago over in that facility, and, uh, the paint has outlived its useful lifespan, so it needs to be done again. We do get a certain, a certain amount of the funds that we receive from HUD for the Housing Authority do go to capital improvement projects every year, and so we typically will kind of bank those for larger projects. The last large one we did, as you'll remember, a couple years ago, was the pipe replacement project throughout the whole building. Um, so this is much smaller in scope, but again, needed maintenance that we're looking at doing. So, uh, we received bids from three contractors. Swan Painting for $60,110, 3R Painting for $152,856, and EL Construction for $63,450. Uh, so there are sufficient funds in the capital fund program for Planters 2 for this project, and staff would recommend, uh, that we authorize the low quote for prepping and painting walls, ceilings, and doors on floors, floors 2 through 10, um, for the amount of $60,110 to Swan Painting. If you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
Yeah, I do, just real quick. And, uh, how long has it been since this has been painted?
About 12 and a half years.
Oh, has it? Oh, okay. Okay. That's all I had.
Any other questions?
No.
No? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that, uh, we award the bid to Swan Painting for, uh, floors 2 through 10 of the Planters 2 project, not to exceed $61,110.
A second.
$60,110, sorry.
Thank you.
A second.
I'll begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And I'm happy to see it's, uh, a company here in Leavenworth.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Next, and I believe this is the last item, is, uh, consider accepting a little bit for Planters 2 removal and installation of all flooring and cove base on all floors 2 through 10.
Okay, so again, similarly, this, uh, the flooring was last replaced over in the Planters 2 building about 12 and a half years ago. Um, so the flooring does take a bit of a beating over there. It's all carpet right now. So, uh, we are looking to replace all of that on floors 2 through 10. They are looking to put the LVT, the, the luxury vinyl tile, in the laundry room and elevator lobbies. Those are typically the highest-traffic areas that we see the most spills, so that'll have a little bit more useful life instead of carpet, which we have now. Again, uh, there are sufficient funds in the capital fund program for Planters 2 to pay for this project. We solicited bids, uh, we received two bids, one company declined to bid. The two that we received were from Seaford Flooring and for an amount of $101,655.72, and Midwest Carpet Center for $106,630.85. So, staff would recommend that the proposal of $101,655.72 be awarded to Seaford Flooring.
No.
Question? Um, we are, we are tax exempt, are we not?
Uh, this is all, yeah, this would be all through the federal funds that we receive through the Housing Authority.
So, it'd be tax exempt?
Uh, I believe so.
Sales tax exempt, probably so.
Yeah, sales tax. The, uh, the 106, 630.85 is including sales tax, I believe. Yeah. Where was it? Yeah, on the bottom of their, the proposal, for 100, for 106,000, it says sales tax, $6,602.85. If we don't pay that sales tax, then that bid becomes $100,028.
We don't know that. Maybe we do pay sales tax.
Yeah, I, as a, as a general rule, we don't. Um, I, I'm, I'm not entirely sure. Maybe, we may need to hold and see, um, if there's a federal, we do have to pay different wage scales and Davis-Baden wages and such, but that's a fair question that I can't answer.
Yeah, I don't believe you pay sales tax.
I don't think so either.
If, if the other quote doesn't have it, then you didn't do it as you have to.
Well, the other one doesn't.
Yeah, the other quote isn't, yeah, it's not itemized.
Yeah, it needs to be cleared then.
Yeah, we can double check.
I don't think we can vote on that today.
Yeah, I would, I'd probably, good catch. We'd probably have to table the item until we can get some clarification on that with the bids.
Yeah. That being the case, this item is tabled for the next meeting. That's all the items we have.
No, it isn't. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
There is that, yes.
The, uh, I move to approve the claims for November 19th, 2022, through December 9th, 2022, in the amount of $1,745,637.88, net amount for longevity pay effective November 25th, 2022, in the amount of $41,698.7, and payroll number 24, effective December 2nd, 2022, in the amount of $370,169.85. No police and fire attention.
I second.
Want to start voting with Commissioner Leonhardt?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Nothing tonight for me?
Mr. City Mayor, no, nothing. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You want to go first?
Yes, I'd like to go first, and then I'm going to leave. I think Mr. Wilson has done so much for our community, and I think he was caught off-guard tonight, um, because this is traditionally, the way things go is that the citizens that vote for our elected officials, um, help us make that decision of who gets to be mayor and who gets to be mayor pro tem. And, um, I mean, that's the way it is when Commissioner Leonhardt came in behind me. She was, we voted for her to be mayor pro tem, even though she didn't have any experience either. But Mr. Wilson has had a lot of experience, and the reason he was elected by such a wide margin is because he's done so much for our community, and especially for the youth of our community, and we thank you very much for that.
I agree.
And, um, but I would have to, I have to stand with the vote of the people. I believe in the people of Leavenworth, and I stand by the vote of the people that he should have been mayor this time. And that's all I have to say, and I'm going to leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, no, I don't really have too much, uh, at this point. Hard to believe we're already halfway through December right now, and Christmas is around the corner, so, um, definitely excited to see what we can do for 2023, and, uh, I feel like, um, already into, uh, the end of Q1 right now with everything we've got on the table. So, uh, just wish everybody Merry Christmas. That's all for tonight.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm definitely disappointed in the, the decision that was made tonight. Uh, I believe there was conversations behind closed doors, uh, that led to this decision, uh, which is against the public meetings law. Um, and I, like I said, I thank the citizens for believing in me, uh, for electing me and giving me the opportunity to serve. If you check my attendance record, look over the five years that I have been serving this commi, this, this community, it's, it's not about me. I believe the decision that was made today was a personal feeling, uh, that Commissioner Kamala had against me, and if you look and see how many times that I've missed, you've seen that I was either calling in, or if I wasn't in attendance, I was sick. And that is no different than any other commissioner that has been on this commission. I love this community. I give to this community, and I don't do it to serve for a position. I served to make a difference, and then a position comes, and everything I do, I do it under God and to the citizen and its community. So, I am disappointed with tonight, but I encourage you citizens, if you don't ever want to see this happen again, change the form of government. I encourage you to change the form of government. This is unfair, this is political, and this is not what our city represents. I'm disappointed with the decisions tonight, but thank you all for electing me and supporting me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Leonhardt?
Yeah, no, uh, yeah, it's been an exciting year, and I can't believe it's already over. Uh, and I'm grateful for being able to be your mayor. Uh, we have a lot of things we've accomplished as a team, and still, we have a lot more for this next year. Uh, no matter my feelings, that was my vote, and, um, the other ones didn't have to follow that way, and it just, it was what it is. So, that is my belief. And, uh, I don't think, do we have a December 20th meeting or study session?
Not entirely sure yet.
Not entirely sure yet.
Okay. But otherwise, no, have a great rest of the week, and happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. I do appreciate the, the trust and confidence in me by the, those who voted and who did support me. I will try to serve the city completely, as best as I can, and I will continue to, I continue to take care of matters at hand that will promote the city of Leavenworth, and continue to make the city a great place to live, work, and grow. I have, I have to say, I, I do appreciate all the work that you've done over the number of years that you've done it. I, and I, I do appreciate your leadership. You did have your turn as mayor, I know, I was here. And what's called, and then is the, the mayor pro tem. We will continue on, though, through the, through the next year, and see what we can do to make this place a better place to live, work, and grow. Thank you. Oh, I need a, I need a mo, motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Vote?
Aye.
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 We're adjourned.